Welcome, everybody. It, um, is, today is Tuesday, August eleventh, two thousand and twenty. There's our regular, uh, selectmen's meeting. All of the, all of the, uh, selectmen are present, more or less, here, either here in person or on Zoom. As we have Town Manager with us live. As, uh, as the Town Planner is in the background live. And, and as, uh, Town Clerk is Zooming with us. And, uh, we have some guests tonight also. Um, please stand with me and salute the flag. There's, uh...
I can't really hear you guys at all. Can you guys turn up your volume for a second?
We can hear you guys. You can't hear the board?
Can you hear me now?
Just a minute, is, uh, James, can you go into the control room and just let them know that we're having trouble with some of the audio, please?
That's much better.
I can hear that.
You can hear that?
Yep, that's much better.
Alright, we got it going now. Thank you, everybody. Um, uh, first order of business is the approval of the, uh, July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty minutes.
I'll move. I'll second your motion.
Um, any comment? I'll, uh, go through the role, is Ed?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, and Mark, you were absent, so...
Right.
Is, um, is, uh, next is, uh, first public comment, is, uh, we were asked to have, uh, Jamie Blood from the, uh, Corner Point Brewery wanted to speak during this. He has, uh, the, something else coming up later on in our agenda, so is, uh, Jamie, if you'd, uh, unmute yourself, is, uh... Are you there, Jamie?
Alright, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. I appreciate you guys, uh, taking the time to let me speak here, so I'm just, we're, uh, looking at, uh, possibly expanding, um, at some point, obviously, down the road. We're, we're, right now, we have our current location, and we have the, uh, the building at three forty-one School Street, the old Yummies Building. Uh, we, we leased both of those spaces, and where we're, we're already out of room there, which is a good thing. But we are, we have been, or I have been actively looking at the existing fire station. Um, and I've walked in with, with Jen and Code a couple of times. I've had a couple structural engineers prior to COVID, um, as well as architects. And, uh, I know that the new fire station is, is rapidly getting done. And I, and I was told that the, I think the closing date is estimated right around the middle of September.
That's correct.
So I was just kinda, I wanted to see what the process was, um, and what the, I guess, the potential timeline was on the town's plans for either putting it up for bid or selling it. I didn't know if it had to go for public bid, um, just, just general stuff like that. I, I just kinda wanted to know what the process was to sell the building and what the timeline was looking for.
Um, well, maybe the Town Manager could be better, uh, address that.
Yeah, the Fire Department's expected to move into the new station the week of, uh, September eighth through the eleventh. Uh, we're gonna be doing the occupancy permit, uh, hopefully that early, and once that's done, they can move in. Uh, we have a punch list, probably the first of September, that we're gonna, uh, go through. Uh, once they are completely out of the building, um, and I'm gonna have to go back and look at the, um, policies that we have in place for unloading, uh, property. But I would, I would say, once they're out completely, uh, we will start putting together whatever we have to do to either sell it, put it out to bid, um, so I, I would say sometime in mid-September, we'll have a better idea of how we have to manage it.
Do we have to get that appraised, Steve?
Um, I had it, um, looked at by, uh, Nicole Afecto, and, and there wasn't a heck of a lot that she could compare it to, so...
No, I'm not talking about a real, I'm talking about a real appraiser, not a real estate agent, a real appraiser.
Yep, well, I have not had it appraised, so I...
I think we should do that to begin with.
Okay, if that's what the board wants, I'll have it appraised.
Oh, no, I'm just making that comment, right?
Yeah.
That way, it keeps us out of, if something happens with the town, we're not in the middle of any screw-ups.
Yeah, well, it's got a lot of deficiencies, is, that's why we moved into building a new one.
That's not our problem, we just wanna give it praise to find out what it's worth. That's the guy that buys it, it's awesome.
Right.
All we wanna know is what, what it's worth as it sits there.
I can, I can start that process right away.
Right.
Yeah, we need to hire a praise, that, yep.
And, uh, and one of the other things, before the meeting, uh, James and Steve and I were talking about getting the lot surveyed. As James has reached out to, you know, several consultants and, uh, you know, gotten a quick estimate. You know, so that's something else that we're looking at doing, you know, for, uh, fairly, fairly inexpensive money. You know, to make sure that we know exactly what we have and what we would be selling. Um, is, as far as the property itself, I don't believe there are any, you know, legal encumbrances on the property. You know, it's been town, you know, public property for more than a century, so, is, uh, I don't believe there are any kinds of encumbrances on it, but, yeah, my, from the beginning of this, you know, whole, you know, process, is my idea was to get that on the market and get it sold as quickly as possible. Um, if we can work out something, you know, with you, Jamie, or somebody else from Berwick, is, uh, that's even a better solution for us. You know, we, we like to take care of our hometown people, so, and, uh...
Wanted to be able to make sure he makes more beer.
I'm not a beer drinker, so...
I have, I have no desire to, to leave downtown, so I, I think that's a, it's a, it's a great, you know, if we can make it work, it's a great building for us to grow into, so...
So what would you, what, what would you do with it, Jamie?
So, I, I'll, and, and my plan is, uh, because of what the timeline in middle of September, I'll, I'll put some, some actual plans together, three D drawings and, and so forth for you guys to see. But kinda my initial plan is to put the brewing operation and potentially, um, the taproom. I, I mean, I still, the location I have now, I've got to lease for the next two years, which, and I have really no desire to leave that location as far as the tasting room is concerned. Um, so my plan would be to, uh, put the brewing operation on the first floor of that building and potentially a small tasting room, um, and then either utilize the second floor as, as storage, kitchen use for the brewery, or potentially renovate it and lease it out. I've got some interest, um, from, uh, some yoga instructor and so forth, uh, and some other people that, that would like to, like, actually, like, Berwick residents that have businesses elsewhere that would like to kind of come back to Berwick. So, um, that would be the initial plan. So, it's more space, I, right now, the space I have for brewing, we are, we are horrendously out of room. Um, you'll see probably in the next five weeks, I'm gonna have a giant tank show up that's barely gonna fit inside there, but I need it. So, it's, it's just, it's just for growth, but that's, that's what it would be. It would just be a larger footprint of what we have now.
Jamie, just, my comment would be that, um, I think it's a pretty special building, looking at it, the spot's special. I, I don't know if, I don't know, I don't know, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I just kinda, I would like to see something nice done with it. They're gonna do something good across the street, you know, or I just don't wanna see another yard full of aluminum containers up front of the garage doors. I think it should look good.
Well, I think, I think, I think if, I think if you've come down to the tasting room in the brewery now, I don't, I don't, I don't really have that much. Uh, it's a pretty nice location.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that.
I would never, I would never, I would never do any of that anyway. I mean, that, well, you know, the, the look and the atmosphere and, and the layout of a brewery itself is, is not conducive to junk and trash and, and clutter.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, good.
Do any of the board members have any questions or comments for Jamie?
No.
Is, um, now, Jamie, are you staying on for, uh, the other piece of business?
Yes.
Is, um, if there is no objection, is, I'll change the order of business and, uh, take that up now. That way, we can, uh, continue going with Jamie now and, uh, take care of all that. Is there any objection?
No.
No.
Alright, is, uh, we'll go, this is under new business, is Lounge License Corner Brew Point Brewery. Um, give us a little explanation of, uh, what's going on here, Jamie.
So, the current license that we have is, is, it's a, uh, a small brewer's license, they're, they're very common in the state. And, uh, it allows us to make, make beer and sell beer on site, but it's just selling the beer that we, we make on site. A lounge license, uh, is basically, I guess, in, in a easiest way to explain it is, it is, allows us to sell alcohol. Basically turns us, if, if, as far as the state's concerned, into a bar.
Right.
Um, but we, we are not, and I have no desire, nor will I ever, turn that place into a bar. We are doing it solely for, uh, to add wine and cider, simply because there's a lot of business out there for wine and cider. Um, so it's a good complement to the craft beer industry. There's a lot of breweries in the state that have done it already, so it's, it's, it's simply just to do that. We would end up having to have some type of food option, uh, very limited. We're gonna probably do hot dogs and, and some heated up food, um, but, but that is, that's, that's what the lounge license is for.
Um, any questions of Jamie? I, I know, Ken, you had some questions about the application.
Yeah, so what I, what I saw from the application is, it's not complete. It, it looks like, from what I just heard, you're asking for a new license, basically for a lounge license.
Yep.
But when you go through the application, the first step, first question is, new license or renewal of existing, isn't marked, yes or no? So I don't know whether this is a new license, or it's replacing an existing license.
It isn't new, the state, the state, the state got back to me after the fact, um, but it, it is, it's considered a new license.
Okay.
I, I assumed that it was a, not a renewal, but kind of an amendment to my existing license, but it is going to be a new license.
Okay, so then it'd have to be filled out, and then, uh, because it's a new license, uh, question four has to be filled out, and... There was another one, a couple more. One of them, one of them, you're a business entity, so you marked it yes, and immediately it says, if yes, you gotta fill out section seven, which is blank, so...
Okay.
So I, I just think we need to go, you need to go back and take a look at the application and make sure it's filled out.
Okay, yeah.
I, I don't have a big problem with going, actually doing it, it's just paperwork needs to match.
Yep, yep, understood.
Any other questions of Jamie? No. No, um, yeah, um, alright, is, so, is until we get the, 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 uh, completed document, is, uh, can you have that in the next two weeks, so we can take this up at our next meeting, Jamie?
Absolutely, I'll, I'll have it in the next two days, but yeah.
Is, um, alright, is, uh, we'll put it off till then, and we'll, uh, wait for the complete application, and, uh, and, um, and good luck, is, I'd like to see that you're expanding.
I'll get some information to you, Jamie, about the process, uh, by the end of the week.
Okay, alright, perfect. So, yeah, looking forward to it. Hopefully we can, uh, you know, especially with everything that's been going on, uh, it's, it's kind of a ray of sunshine for us, so, we'll take it.
Alright, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, perfect. Alright, thanks everyone, I'm gonna, I'm gonna exit out then.
Alright.
Alright, have a good night.
Good night, you too.
Night.
Alright, um, so that brings us to, uh, a public hearing, we have no public hearing. Um, is, uh, reports of committees unless there's something on Invision?
I'd just say, we have two exciting projects going on. Uh, one of them is replacing the town welcome signs and, and getting some signage that's, that's matching our town branding. That'll be over the next few months, uh, at least, uh, our designer is working on getting some quotes. And the other one is Jeremy Caston, he is a, a movie director, and he's, he's really taking his craft to community videos. He's doing a series of videos, um, Hackmatac Farm, there's a, a florist, um, Jamie will be another feature, and then it's all geared toward, um, reaching out to potential people to, to move to Berwick, getting businesses to move to Berwick, 'cause it all kind of focuses around the edge development. And I saw, um, the, one of the first drafts of the first episodes, I, I really look forward to showing it, 'cause it's, it's just fantastic work he does.
Does he live in town, James?
Yeah, he, 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 he said that he was considering, like, moving out of the country, or moving to New Orleans, I think. He moved from Los Angeles, and he chose Berwick, so...
You seen the guy on Blackberry Hill Road?
Yep, yep, he's one of your neighbors.
Yeah, I know him.
Yeah.
Yep, he's got a...
Yeah, he, he, he's a, he's a fun guy to be around, too, he's just full of energy.
Right.
You know, he's, uh, a lot, a lot of fun to be around.
He was one of the co, co, um, producers of the concert series.
Right.
And we had a ton of good stuff planned for this year. Obviously, we're gonna postpone it for next year, but we had incredible planning of, of all kinds of stuff, so, stay tuned for that as well.
Nice, thank you, James.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, uh, we have no department reports, no appointments, anything under unfinished business? That brings us to our Town Manager's report.
Uh, we've got, uh, received two proposals for the water department project after I asked, um, several of them. One had, that we've been talking to, to look at how we can eliminate the water problem that we're having with manganese and, um, the disinfectant byproduct. Uh, it's worse during the drought, the manganese becomes worse every year, and, and it actually has popped its head up other times throughout the year. Uh, so, talking to several different engineering groups, um, it was my recommendation that we change the scope of... We had a one point two million dollar, uh, loan from, it's an EPA loan through the main drinking water program. Um, and it had, uh, a scope of work to do quite a bit more work, uh, to see if they could fix the problem. Um, my feeling is that I don't think we should be borrowing one point two million, um, if we don't really have a definitive end of, uh, cleaning up this water source. Um, so, the recommendations on several of the, uh, two of those proposals were to start to look for a different water source, groundwater. Um, I talked to the drinking water program, both the executive director and, and the individual, Rick Davy, who, uh, managed, oh, not Rick Davy, but Dawson, Rick Dawson, to, about what, um, their thoughts were about changing the scope, and they said, uh, they thought that was a great idea. They know we've had problems for years, they agree that we really need to take a hard look at a different water source. Uh, Wright Pierce, uh, just upon my discussions with them, had their geologist looking at aquifers in the area, and James, uh, got right on it right away, and, and, uh, found, there's quite a few aquifers in this region. And so, uh, uh, talking to them, I think that's the first place we should start, looking for a source of water that isn't the river, uh, to see if it can produce the kind of water quantity that we need, which is about three hundred gallons per minute, uh, and also produce the, uh, quality that we're looking for, which the groundwater, they feel, should be, uh, a much better source of water. So, uh, talking with them today, we're gonna put our one point two million, uh, dollar, uh, loan, uh, application on hold for now. I'm gonna send them a new scope of, uh, work, uh, which will outline, uh, definitively and incrementally how we're gonna start searching for another source, um, and, and see what we come up with, and then we'll have a better idea if we need to, if we find the water that we need, uh, what it will cost to bring it into the plant, and, and, uh, and use that. I think that makes more sense than, you've been trying for years to, to get rid of the manganese, and it just gets worse every year.
Oh, we gotta get better water source.
You do.
Yeah.
So, I think, uh, that's the direction we're gonna go, um, and I just wanted to let you know, I've, I probably need to, uh, bring back a request to pick a, uh, engineering firm. Um, it's either Ty Bond, who we've been with for quite a few years, or Wright Pierce, um, once I get the scope of work finalized. Um, so, that's a, uh, move in the right direction, uh, the bond bank's been notified. We're gonna put the, uh, loan application, or bond application on hold until we have a better idea of, uh, the direction we're going. Um, and I, I, the water, drinking water program people were very excited that this is the direction that we're looking. They think it's time, uh, and they, and they also said that throughout the state of Maine, all the way, uh, north to, uh, the Fort Kent, it's, it's an issue with water because of the drought, and we're experiencing statewide, and, uh, water coming from rivers is producing problems with, uh, iron and manganese, so we're going in the right direction. On that note, um, I have, uh, be adding a, a new, uh, Director of Public Works and, uh, Water Utilities. Um, I've, uh, confirmed his application and checked his references, he will be here, uh, September eighth. He'll be taking over management, uh, administrative management of the water department and public works to lose... And I think it's a, a good move, he's got, uh, quite a bit of years of managing a larger, uh, water plant, which has its own, basically, public works people with, does all their own work, so he's got just the experience that we're looking for. I'm excited, his name is Jody Gigon, G-I-G-O-N, I think that's how you pronounce it. We've met him, uh, several times, and, uh, he's excited to be coming on board. So, that, that's coming, September eighth, he may be here a few days earlier, but, um, I'm excited about that, so...
Where, where is she from, Steve?
She's from, uh, Squiggo County, a little town called Not So Little, they have fifty-five, fifty-five thousand customers, so, uh, it's, uh, Skiba, New York, it's, he said, he, he's looking forward to having only a hundred inches of snow versus four hundred in their winters off the, the Great Lakes there, so they, I didn't realize they got that much snow, but...
Oh, yeah.
And he's been, uh, for some rea, he got married in, um, Salem, New Hampshire, so he's got some ties there, I... And he and his wife are both from that area, and they, uh, are hoping to move to either New Hampshire or Maine, so he's been looking for a house, and, um...
Didn't, didn't we talk sometime back, Tom, about, didn't we have some test wells drilled down by the, by the water plant now, or out by the sod farm?
Uh, we never, we never drilled any wells, we, we had the study done, and they lo, and they identified some potential sites, but we never did the drilling, is, and the reason we didn't do the drilling is when they told us that it was, that was back in the mid-nineties, it was gonna be a million dollars to hook up to the plant, is, uh, that's when we decided not to do that, but... Is, you know, from looking at some of the maps that Steve showed me, as far as the aquifers, though, um, there appears to be some right behind where the plant is, and, uh...
All the way into Lebanon.
And, you know, so, I suggested to Steve, you know, let's put a drill rig right on the plant's property and see what we have, you know? And it might take some money and, to, to do it, but it's short money, and even if we don't get the three hundred gallons a minute that we're quite, that they said...
It'll always add to it.
Well, is, we can dilute, we can dilute what we do have, you know? You know, and use that, and, you know, so it's an improvement, so I think this is something that, you know, we really need to...
According to the geologist at, uh, Wright Pierce, uh, he was saying that the studies that we had done were done in eighty-six and eighty-nine, and, and there's been a lot better technology today and, and more work done on groundwater, and, uh, he, he thinks we'll find, by the looks of the aquifer, a, a good source, but, you know, he won't swear to it until we start drilling.
Yeah, well...
But, I, I, um, it's, it's the right move, uh, for us, I think. So, I'm, I'm excited about that, and that they're gonna hold the money, um, and, uh, we'll be able to draw down when we're ready, uh, so, um...
Now, is this a grant, Steve, or is it, we have to pay it back?
No, we have to pay it back, it'll, it'll go, it'll run through the main bond bank, I've already put the application in, and I, they had some questions, and I, uh, just got back, uh, to them this afternoon, that, uh, to hold, hold the application until I get a new scope of work and, and a new budget.
Can't, can't, um, James, look around for some free money, grants, or stuff like that?
Everybody's looking for free money.
Free money.
Well, we might as well call one of the bad ones, we're running this out.
Well, I, I've talked, the main drinking water program, um, they're, according to Mike, they're right out straight because of the drought and people looking for funding, and we were on the list prior to all this occurring, so we're in line for the one point two, um, loan, low-interest loan, and, and we only pay what we draw down, so we may, we may not need one point two, that, that's a benefit of this.
So you're saying we can use the one point two for the drilling, testing, test holes?
Yes, we can, yeah, we can do it for all the engineering and scope of services and everything, so...
Okay.
That's all I have.
Um, you wanna give, give an update on the fire station at all?
Fire station, uh, exciting, they, they paved, uh, both, all the entrances, and I understand that they were supposedly out there spreading, uh, topsoil today, getting ready for the, uh, planting of all the grass and shrubs and all that. Um, the doors will be the last thing they put in, uh, and the exterior doors will be probably sometime next week. Uh, interior doors will be the last thing they do, um, but I was in the building last night, and, uh, it's really come together. It'll, it'll be done, they've done a nice job.
The, the, uh, the, the Fire Department's already started moving their equipment in, you know, so they've already started the transfer, and, uh, so... Yeah, and things seem to be on schedule, and, you know, as Steve said, something about the doors is, because, the, the interior wooden doors, because of the, uh, um, coronavirus and, uh, shutdowns and things, they've been delayed, so they're gonna be right at the last minute, you know, probably, but, is, everything looks good, uh, they should be moving in, end of September.
Yep, and we, we're on budget for what we have for funding, so we should come in at a good place, which is really good.
Yeah, we, we should have had the number of the landscape design done, you know, at the end of the week, at first of the week.
Oh, good, I need to...
Now they're working with Dennis and, uh, Mark.
They're concerned about the drought and putting down the, the seed, the grass seed, uh, so I need to talk about how we're gonna irrigate that. We're not putting any irrigation in the ground, but if it stays dry like this, and they're gonna start spreading seed, I, I need to be able to...
We'll put a meter on the hybrid.
Huh?
We'll run some sprinklers off, some sprinklers.
Yep, that's what I figured.
But, um, I, I'm gonna, I made sure that Reyno's gonna put sleeving on the walkways, so when we do decide to do irrigation, we'll have all the sleeving and stuff in to do it, 'cause someday we might wanna do it, so we'll put the sleeving in. The sleeving's there, Steve.
Oh, good.
Billy said it'd be alright if he did it.
Alright.
Is that okay?
Yep, sounds good.
And there's spick, there's, uh, sprinklers all around the building, on, outside the building, so that's, that's good, too.
Alright, I'll talk more to you.
They moved damn sprinkler around, it's still a bit wet.
Alright, alright. Any questions of Steve from anybody?
No.
No? Alright, is, uh, bring me to the account payable.
Goodnight, guys.
Have a good night.
Night, James.
Goodnight, James, thank you.
Is, uh, we have a payroll warrant number eight from August sixth, two thousand and twenty, for the amount of sixty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. We have a payroll warrant number nine from August thirteenth, or for August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, for the amount of sixty-six thousand, five hundred eighty dollars and eleven cents. An account payable warrant dated August twelfth, two thousand and twenty, for the amount of one million, six hundred eighteen dollars, six, one million, six hundred eighteen thousand... for the amount of $1,618,657.58. Is I'll make a motion that we pay our bills. Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, I'll go through the roll. Ed?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right. New business, the MMA vice president and executive committee members ballot. We have a deadline of Friday, August 21st. Is, so.
There's only two people.
Well, it is, we have, we have a vote, a vice president, one term, and one person is on that. And the executive committee, three members, and we have three people running for that. Is for the vice president, we have James Bennett, the city manager of the city of Bedford. For the executive committee, we have Robert Butler, chair of the select board of the town of Waldenboro. Terry Helm, select person, town of Grand Isle. And Diane Heinz, the town manager of the town of Ludlow and Reed Plantation.
All those can't be, for executive committee, they gotta be local people for you to vote on them. Do you have the right?
Proposed nominating committee?
I think.
Oh, it says signed by the municipal or municipal office. No.
I see.
No, because the executive committee would be.
It'd be local.
No, it'd be for the state. The vice president and the executive committee would be for the state.
No, I'm thinking of the legislative policy committee, I'm sorry.
Right, right.
That was last, that was last meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah, we tried to do this before.
That's right. I'm sorry.
Any discussion?
Move, accept.
As presented?
As presented.
Second.
Any comments?
No.
Is, you know, is these people doing service for us? Is I, I'm glad they're stepping up to do this, is I'm glad I'm not doing it myself, so. We have a motion and a second. Is I'll go through the roll. Ed?
Yes.
Is Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right, then we have the administrative consent for 344 Diamond Hill Road. This is what we talked about at our last meeting. Is the foundation was put into the wrong place. Is they came to an agreement with the code enforcement and they agreed to pay a fine. I'm trying to see where the. Oh, the fine and attorney's fee is the amount of $2,835. Now, this is what we discussed last week, last meeting. Nothing new to add to it.
No.
Is all we need to do is to, I guess we can.
Authorize.
Authorize the town manager to sign the consent decree, I guess is what we're looking for.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? I'll go through the roll. Ed?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right. The next is the pandemic policy adoption.
This is something that surfaced to just about every single town, having a policy in place to how we manage employees who either get sick or have traveled, which we've had three people, or two people who have traveled outside the state and need to isolate themselves. One of them came down with COVID-19 and he was quarantined for 14 days. He and his family all had it and they recovered quite well, which was nice to hear. The other one traveled out of the state on vacation and he has been, he was directed, he probably should get a test, otherwise he should quarantine himself for 14 days, which he's doing. He did have a test. He hasn't heard back from it. So he will not be able to come back to work until the Monday of next week. But it answers questions such as how he is going to get paid. Is he gonna have to use his vacation time, comp time, or no pay? You have to be, according to legal, you have to be sick in order to use your sick time. So it points out all these things. If the supervisor sees somebody that seems to have symptoms of COVID-19, they can ask them to isolate themselves and it's just a protection for all of us here. So the legal did look at it. She requested that we not take any action tonight. She wants to go through it some more and ask us some questions. So we'll address it at our next meeting, but take a, take a look at it. She's made some recommendations, but we just haven't gotten the opportunity to talk to her about it, so. It's a good policy.
Hey, Steve, this is Ken. I just have one question about the travel. It basically says, any employee choosing to travel out of the state, what do we do for the local area since we're a border town? Somebody, somebody needs to go to.
New Hampshire.
Something happening in New Hampshire, do they have to quarantine if they come back? If they go visit family?
I don't have the answer to that. That's something, because we are a border state, is a good legal question.
Yeah, because the state right now, the way I understand it, we've got a few states where we're not requiring people coming into the state to certify or quarantine, like New Hampshire, Vermont.
Yeah. Right.
So I'm wondering whether this needs to be modified to kind of align with what the state is saying we need to do.
Yeah, I think it will follow the CDC rules and state, but it's a good question. We will address that when we talk to her and make sure we've got all the right language there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Steve? No?
I got one thing I wanted to say. The last, over to the fire department. When they tore the other building down, I had them set aside a bunch of granite, square granite pieces. They're set off in one corner of the property. They're gonna leave them there. I thought we could use those dead granite to maybe put around that wetlands or make a sign base out of or something instead of letting them have it. It's good, it's good, nice granite.
Yeah, I talked to them at the meeting today about the pile there and I, he mentioned that you had requested to keep it and I think we should as well.
Right.
I think we can find good use for it. It is our granite, so they.
Yeah, we'll find a place to landscape, put it on the pond, throw the propane tanks.
Yep.
Instead of alveite, we can put some, put it around the propane tank there.
Yeah, I want to make sure we have enough granite for the 71 Sullivan as well. I think we do up there, but just in case we need a piece.
Right.
So.
Curbing?
No, we.
Delineating the parking areas. We're gonna use those granite, we're gonna use those granite blocks to, you know, delineate parking. You know, that way we.
Plenty of granite there. We got plenty.
Yeah.
We got some on site up.
There's some boulders too, if you want to use some boulders.
Yeah. So, all right, thank you. The MMA workers compensation safety incentive program resolve form.
This will help. It's a safety program. It's run through the main municipal association. We get credit for having a program in place. We have a safety program that had been running up until maybe a year ago and, you know, things changed with this pandemic and personnel, so we want to pick that back up as well. So I just, do you have to vote on that?
It says attest by the governing board.
Yeah, I guess so.
So.
You just have to vote that we are gonna participate in it then.
Yeah, we've participated in the past, correct?
Yeah, we have.
So, there's a, any questions of Steve in the, about the program? Nope. We have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second. Is I will, no further discussion. I'll go through the roll. Is Ed?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you. Let's see, we have no quick claim deeds, no abatements, no public for a second public comment, no executive session.
None.
Other business non-agenda items? Anything anybody wants to bring up?
Well, actually, I wanted to say something under the public comments section.
Oh, okay, go right ahead.
This weekend, I'm having a big yard sale and I just wanted to let people know. We're gonna have a ton of baby clothes, toddler, newborn.
Or babies, I guess.
Bring some stuff over for your family.
Yeah, I'll drop some stuff off.
If it's good, if it's clean, if it's, you know, sure.
Face mask required?
We're gonna have movies, just a whole bunch of stuff. I'm sure people can come and find something fun for cheap.
That's good, yeah.
Come by Saturday or Sunday on Blister Road.
All right.
Nice.
Any other? One more motion. Motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn, a second. All those in favor? Aye?
Stay safe.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, boss. Night, guys. Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
See you at the next one.